Can we call the meeting to order? The Board of Education will start with Brent Huss with roll call.
Brent Huss.
Phil Butler.
Kimberly McMichael.
Vicki Austin.
Vicki McKinney.
Paula Rakestraw.
Bob Wyatt.
Announcements, there is no work session scheduled in May. Memorial Day is going to be May 27. The next board meeting will be scheduled Monday, June the 10th, 2024. The meeting begins at 6:00 at Central Administrative Offices located at 511 Harrington Avenue. Graduation ceremonies are listed. Early College this Thursday, May 16th at 6 o'clock at the Keys Gymnasium RCC Campus. McMichael will be Thursday, June 6th, 7:30 in the football stadium. Rain date is Saturday, June the 8th at 7:30. Morehead High School will be Thursday, June the 6th, 7:30 in the football stadium. Rain date is Friday, June 7th, 7:30. Readsville High School is Friday, June 7th, 7:30 in the auditorium. Rockingham High, Friday, June the 7th, 7 o'clock in the football stadium. Rain date is Saturday, June the 8th, 7 o'clock. The RCS 2024 Employee Retirement Banquet will take place on Tuesday, May 21st at the Wright Memorial Events Center located at 184 Sladen Road, Eden. The banquet will commence at 6 o'clock PM. You can access the latest agendas from the Rockingham County Board of Education by visiting www.rock.k12.nc.us/BoardOfEducation and clicking on Board Meeting Agendas. Now we will have our moment of prayer with Pastor Kevin Donovan from First Wesleyan Church of Eden.
Please join me as we pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening that we can gather here. Lord, we thank you for our school board and we just ask your blessing upon them as they come together this evening for their meeting and we just pray that you'd be with each and every one of them, Lord, and guide them in the decisions that need to be made and thank you for all that they do and we thank you for our school system and how you've been with us through another school year and as we prepare to close another year, Lord, we thank especially this evening of our students and as they prepare for end of grade testing, but as they prepare for exams and all the different things that come along with the end of the year and we just ask your special blessing upon each of those during this time that you'd be with them and give them the strength and the help that they need and be with the staff as well, Lord, as they encourage and help these students each day. And we thank also the graduates as they prepare to make this big adjustment to their life, Father, of graduating and, Lord, we just pray for your blessing upon each of those as they go into this world, Lord, that you'd guide and direct them as well. And, Lord, again, we thank you for this evening that we can gather here and we thank you for all that will take place during this time and just ask your blessing upon this meeting and all that are gathered here. In Jesus's holy name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much for being here tonight. We would like Easton and Evan from Bethany School to come up and lead us with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, boys, so much.
And they did that with short notice.
They did. They did. They did an excellent job. Thank you, boys. Okay, now we do the approval of the agenda.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda. I'd like to remove item 6.8 under consent agenda, renewal of copier lease. Ms. Ellis, we're going to pull that. I'd like to add item 7.4 under action to approve purchase of four canteen trucks by Dr. Cassell. I'd like to add item 7.5 under action, approve regional elementary options, Ms. Young.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the, to second the agenda?
So move.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, Dr. Stover, Dr. Perkins.
So we have lots of recognitions, which is fabulous. I'm just going to be talking about one, but I do want to take a second to congratulate the McMichael TSA team or, as I told them, the annual convening of their greatness in the competition and then also the Bethany Battle of the Books team. I was thinking about this today and I'm pretty sure that I've read 15 books so far this year and I'm also pretty sure that I cannot answer specific questions about those 15 books that I've read and I'm almost, I'm positive I would not have done that when I was in upper elementary school, so I wanted to just add my congratulations. One of our great traditions here in Rockingham County is that we have a superintendent's art award and we're carrying that on this year and we're going to recognize the winners. This year we also had the art teachers put on a countywide recognition, which was amazing, had lots of parents attend and so this might be a time for us to merge those two traditions, the old tradition and the new tradition together, but we still wanted to carry on this and recognize some outstanding artists. So, Dr. Perkins?
Yes, good evening, everyone. And if you didn't notice, in the lobby area outside there, all the students' artwork is displayed, so please, as you leave tonight, take a look at that. It's really some great, great student work. So we will call out the students from middle school first and their school, their teacher, and then the title of their work and if you would come up to be recognized and with a picture and a certificate. So first from, first from Holmes Middle School is Tatum Holly and our teacher is Melissa Meadows, Principal Christie Bailey, and her work was a color photograph on canvas. Next, from Western Rockingham Middle School, 8th grader Colton Bradford. Our teacher is Ms. Dalton, Principal Stephanie Ray, and this was a papier-mache letter K. Next is Jayla Gerald, 8th grade, Readsville Middle School. Teacher is Ms. Walker, Principal Archie. She was our honorable mention for middle school and her title of the work was a Vortex Colored Pencil Project. And last, but not least, Bella Fulton, 7th grader, Rockingham County Middle School. Mr. Williamson is the art teacher, Principal Dollar Height, and she was our winner. I didn't see her. And her artwork was Hands Washing Off Blood in Sink. It's really neat if you look at that out there. Let's just give her a round of applause, too. Um, don't think so. For our high school, first we have Cassidy Archuleta, 11th grader from Morehead High School. Our teacher is Ms. Howell, Principal Jason Tuggle, and artwork was titled Textured Road Stretching Into the Distance. Next, and this young lady won the award last year and her artwork is, has been hanging upstairs, but it fell, or almost fell. I think somebody saw it was falling and they took it down to reinforce the hangers, but it's still been here for a year. Meredith Pegram, 12th grader, Rockingham County High School. Teacher is Ms. Graham, Principal Russell Vernon. She's our honorable winner, honorable mention winner, and her title was Yellow Brick Road. And Meredith, last year's was an oil-based painting, wasn't it? Wasn't it? Yeah, that's neat. And our winner for high school is Viola Gory, 12th grader from Readsville High School. Teacher is Ms. Moore, Principal Blackwell. She's the winner and her title was A Mixed Media of the Holy Christ. Congratulations.
Okay, now we have the CTE recognitions. Dr. Perkins and Ms. Nana Walsh.
Ms. Walsh is going to come up and help us. We are really excited to honor McMichael High School again for their CTE recognitions and Ms. Walsh is going to give out certificates and if you all will come up as we call your name. First off, McMichael Chapter of the North Carolina Technology Student Association, or TSA, attended the North Carolina TSA State Conference on April, in April, 18th through the 20th at the Curry Convention Center in Greensboro. And the TSA students competed in a variety of STEM activities related to technology, engineering, and design and they won several awards, including the chapter award, Chapter of the Year for the small chapters. So that's outstanding and you all won that last year, didn't you? That was great. This is the highest award at the NCTSA State Conference and is determined by service projects, donations to the American Cancer Society, and student placements in various competitions. Let's give them a big round of applause for that. They also won the Advisor Award for the North Carolina TSA High School Advisor of the Year, Ms. Emily Treadway. Student awards, third place, System Control Technology. We had the team of Jose Carrera, Trevon Stewart, and Marco Delengel. All right, for third place pen design, we had Joshua Griffin. Third place board game design, Trevon Stewart, Alex Bryant, Jose Carrera, and Paxton Stevens.
What was the name of your?
Oh, board game.
Sea Squirrels.
Sea Squirrels.
I think they actually brought the game last year, didn't they? They demonstrated that?
Yes, they did. We have a long meeting this time.
Yeah, that's right.
Third place CAD, Computer Automated Design, is that what CAD is? aided, computer aided design, architectural, and Paxton Stevens, winner, third place. All right, second place Dragster Design, Soray Torres Aziniga. And first place for Dragster Design was Eaton Castanada Panetta. I think that's all. So we want to do one big group?
Dr. Stover, let me say something about this group that I probably said last year. Excellence in any program depends on the people that are the advisors and we've got the best.
And we were lucky that they were recognized as such as well.
Exactly.
Thank you for saying that. Great.
The Battle of the Book winners from Bethany School, Ms. Lisa Miller.
Tonight, we're going to recognize Bethany's Battle of the Books team. First, they won their zonal competition between four other elementary schools, then they went on to win the district competition and now they have competed at the regional, the Piedmont Tribe Regional, and they came in second place there. So we are very proud of them and we congratulate both the students and their coaches that have supported them this whole season in preparing. So without further ado, we're going to recognize each student. First, we have Easton Fritz. Elizabeth Magnusson. Alex Marina. Millie Morris. Chloe Oakley. Evan Stoltz.
Max Kancher, that's a great one.
Robert Trish. Finley Wallace.
Do you have a family or family? Congratulations.
Jackson Williams. Ms. Kim Shotwell is one of our coaches. And our other coach, Ms. Jennifer Long.
Congratulations. Yeah, all right, so you guys get in front, we'll get in the back. Take two steps up. Yes, there we go.
Yeah, your principal needs to be there. There you go. Somebody answer your phone, too.
So again, congratulations to everyone we recognized. While we would love to have you stay for our board meeting and learn about the work teams of local government, which I think is important, we also understand we have busy days, so feel free, if you need to, to exit at any time. Thank you.
Congratulations to all of our winners tonight and everyone that was recognized. Congratulations. Mr. McPherson, would you read our statement to go into public comments?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
In accordance with school board policy 2310, we will now turn to the public comments section of our meeting. And I have the Board of Education, I would like to express our gratitude for your contributions to our discussion of issues facing our board and our schools. Public comments do not necessarily reflect views of the board. Board members will not respond directly to individuals who address the board during public, during this portion of the meeting, except to request clarification of points made by the presenter. Out of respect for the privacy of our students and staff, discussion of matters involving individual students or personnel will not be permitted. All speakers will be allowed three minutes for their comments and we ask that you please conclude your comments when you hear the second beep. Thank you to each of you who have signed up for public comment today.
Thank you. Our first speaker will be Crystal Wilson.
Good afternoon. My name is Crystal Wilson and I have three children, two of which who attend Dillard Academy. My name isn't important, I want you to remember my son's name, Maxwell. He has had the hardest year in 4th grade. My son has been traumatized by a monster. I will not address her as a teacher because she doesn't deserve that title. Rockingham County has failed my son. Max, along with several other students, have been verbally, emotionally, and physically abused at school by this person. Max was brave enough to speak up for not only himself, but other students as well. It was reported immediately to the school central office, Dr. Stover and Dr. Perkins. Dr. Stover received my email on March 8th. It took him 12 days to respond to my urgent email. 12 days. You sir failed my son. 12 days is totally unacceptable. Your response was, you thought you had already spoken to me. You can look at your email to see who you have and have not sent emails to, it's not hard. It wasn't until I forwarded my email to Dr. Perkins that I got a reply. I have emails dating back until January 18th to show you that this person was already verbally abusing children in the classroom. That was nine days into her teaching at Dillard Academy. School is supposed to be a safe place. Max's safe place was ruined. I don't know how we come back from that. Max is a shell of the kid that he used to be. Mental health is a real deal. He has been affected in a negative way when she told him he was a waste of her time. She said he could go in the hallway so she didn't have to hear him breathe. She also waited until the other adult in the room was gone and she got so close to my son's face that her saliva went in his mouth when she yelled at him. She made him walk 10 laps at recess because he cannot solve a math problem verbally out loud fast enough for her. As an adult, would you be able to perform your job if any of that was happening to you? Could you sleep well at night if you knew you had to go back in that room with her? Would you have diarrhea in the morning on the way to work? Would you be able to focus and do your best every day? No, Max either. I have watched my child cry himself to sleep many nights because she made him feel not good enough, not smart enough, and defeated. This person tore him down. His grades, spirit, self-esteem, and mental health have negatively been impacted. He has severe ADHD and I asked for additional help from him after school and was told, well, maybe he's just a C student. I'm here today to be my son's voice. My number one job as a parent is to protect him. I feel like I have let him down.
Hands up. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for coming. Ms. DeLunsford?
May I give my time to Crystal so she may finish reading this?
That would be fine.
Thank you.
No. No. Oh, you don't have your time?
You can finish, sorry.
I can finish reading that one.
Yeah.
Okay. Rockingham County needs to do better. If the shoe was on the other foot and he did that to a teacher, it would have been handled swiftly. He would have been expelled. This monster was back to school the next day. She was able to continue to be in my son's room every single day. Her teaching license needs to be taken so she can't do this to anyone ever again. What is Rockingham County going to do about this? Not all children learn the same. That's when good teachers think outside the box. They get on that child's level to see what helps them succeed. We have so many great educators, such as Ms. Gentry, Ms. Stevens, Ms. Martin, Ms. Vickers, and Dr. Whitten. Thank God for those teachers. Dr. Whitten and Ms. Vickers have had to take on so much extra this time, this year. They have really done right by Max. They have given him a chance and never yelled at him. My child, nor any child, should never be afraid to come to school because of a teacher. Do better. Thank you for allowing me to be a voice for Max. I will not stop until my son's mental health is better. I won't stop until he believes in himself again, until he's confident and until he doesn't have the title, until she doesn't have the title of teacher ever again. What are you going to do to help my son? I would also like to add, I would really like to see some type of background check done on teachers. Police officers have to do it, parents have to do it to be able to go on field trips with our children. Is there not a protocol for that for our teachers? I would really like to see that happen if not. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa Robertson? It's been done, okay. Valencia Abbott?
I'm Valencia Abbott and I've been a teacher in Rockingham County for 15 years, with the last 12 being at Rockingham Early College High School. In my 20 years of teaching, I have not had any students enter the National History Day Contest until this year. Not only did I have a trio of students to enter the contest, but their submission was placed first at the state level in the senior group documentary division and they will be attending the National History Day Contest in June. The inception of National History Day in 1974 marked a significant shift in history education. The aim was to foster critical thinking, research skills, and a deeper understanding of historical events. This transformative approach to teaching led to the creation of the National History Day Program from an Ohio program, which empowered students to explore historical topics of interest and present their findings intuitively. In 1979, the program went national and became what we know as National History Day. NHD has become one of the most prestigious academic competitions for middle and high school students in the United States. One of the most rewarding aspects of National History Day is its emphasis on primary source research. Students are not just learning about history, they are actively engaging with it. They delve into the archives, conduct interviews, and analyze historical documents to understand their chosen topic comprehensively. The submission to the National History Day Contest is the first time in Rockingham County schools' history that students have made it to this level. The topic of the building of the local history of Rockingham County should be moved to have the community behind them in their quest and not just with an acknowledgement, but also with funding to get them to the contest. Transportation and lodging to College Park, Maryland will be expensive. Public money should be spent for public school students. National History Day is more than just research papers and exhibits. It's about embracing diversity and allowing students to express their creativity and passion for history in various forms. From documentaries to performances, websites to traditional research, papers, every student's unique perspective is valued and celebrated, making National History Day a truly inclusive and enriching experience. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anne Hughes?
Good evening. If you don't remember me, my name is Anne Hughes Brazja. I wear many hats in this community, but I wanted to share one that has brought me great joy in the last year. Aside from my most prized hat I wear as a mama of my three children, I have had the opportunity to serve as South End's PTA Vice President for this past school year. If you don't know this about me, I live to give, be it my time or small things that bring a smile to others' faces. A gift of time for educators can go such a long way. The PTA partnered with South End's administration to end Teacher Appreciation Week with a catered lunch and one full hour to enjoy their meal with their coworkers without children. They were more than appreciative. It was so awesome to see so many smiling faces Friday afternoon. It was so awesome to see so many smiling faces Friday afternoon, happy to have had just a moment to be. Wearing so many hats in the community, I can somewhat relate to what it must be to be in your shoes. I have no doubt that you all are pulled in a million different directions, expected by all to show up. I've asked several times for people to show up for South End. Friday, South End was gifted time by Vicki Austin, Vicki McKinney, and Kimberly McMichael. I first just want to tell you three thank you. Thank you for showing up for our beloved South End, their teachers, and children. But when I say showing up, I don't simply just mean gracing us with your presence. I mean that these women truly showed up for the children. Thank you for taking your time to have meaningful conversations with our students. Friday, I was the woman with all the answers, as for knowing who should be where, which class was supposed to go where, and hopefully the one with the solution if a problem were to arise with scheduling. Every single time I encountered you three, you were all in deep conversation with the child. I was raised to write thank you notes to acknowledge people for doing good things and to make them feel seen. Ms. Austin, Ms. McKinney, Ms. Michael, Ms. McMichael, I thank you for making South End feel seen and loved this past Friday. As a mama of a current South End bear and two little girls eagerly waiting their turn to be part of Bear Nation, I thank you for the love and loyalty you showed South End on Friday. I see you and I appreciate you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we have the board comments. Who would like to go first?
Oh, God.
Okay.
Mrs. Hughes, thank you so much. That meant more to me than I believe it meant to the kids, or maybe not, but I have to share this because I just, it was all I could do not to laugh out loud. I was walking by talking to some kids, and this little fellow, he pulled at me, and he says, "How old are you?" I said, "Well, how old do you think I am?" He said, "You're old." I said, "I'm 71 years old." He said, "My grandma's that old." He said, "Do you have grandchildren? Are you a grandma?" I said, "Yes, I am." He said, "Well, where's your grandchildren? Are they in here?" I said, "No, honey. They have an Eden. That's where they go to school." "Well, I don't understand. Why shouldn't they be here?" I said, "It's okay." And then he looked at me and he said, "Is that a weave in your hair?" I said, "No, it is not." He said, "Let me see." And so I bent down like this. I said, "Pull it." And I said, "Don't pull it hard." And he did this number. He said, "You're right. It's not a weave." So you never know what's going to come out of their little mouths, but whatever comes out, it's precious. I had the best time there Friday. It made me miss being a schoolteacher and being a principal. So, you know, the little kids, they just need you to love them and acknowledge that they are somebody and have lots to say, whether you want to hear it or not.
That's good. Anybody else?
I'll share. I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to be able to volunteer at South End. The other day, the principal called and asked me to come, and then I was unable to attend at Monroton, but I promised to get by there soon. And then we were able to participate in the Reality of Money at Rockingham County High School, and then tomorrow we get to participate in the Reality of Money at Reedsville, and I was unable to participate in the first one that was at Morehead, but I appreciate that these things are happening in our school, and I appreciate the community folks who come out, and they invest their time in our students. It's really, it was really great being able to see that. And then congratulations to the students who did the National History Day. That's the first I've heard about that. Thank you for making us aware. And I also wanted to say how great May Day was out at Bethany earlier this month. There was a huge showing of community and grandparents, and it was, I really enjoyed it. So thank you, Mr. Ains, and it was, I know your staff puts in a lot of work to prepare for that day, but it is truly one of the best days, I think, that we get to attend. And then to the parent, we really can't address issues from the, from the, from this, from this meeting, but I appreciate you coming and speaking to us. And I would like to say that I don't think it's okay for, I don't think it's okay when children spit on teachers, and I don't think it's okay when teachers aren't respectful to our students, and I think that we just live in a world where we have to be awfully careful of being respectful of each other. And so I look forward to our graduations that are coming up and all of those other events that are going to be celebrations, and I hope to see, I hope to see a lot of you out there.
The awards took, took my thunder tonight. I was going to, I've got a thistle written about the TSA at McMichael. I'm proud of those kids, and we do have a lot going on, and we are pulled in a lot of directions, and the school year is ending, and the teachers, I'm sure, are as excited as the students. I know I always was.
I was too.
And I was thinking about the fact, for mothers, yesterday was Mother's Day, and behind each one of these youngsters that we deal with is a set of parents that care deeply about those kids, and we have to remember that and appreciate it.
I just wanted to say congratulations to the students as well tonight, and congratulations to our graduates, and I was excited to hear about the National History Day as well. I just, I don't know if I can get clarification tonight or not, but I think what I heard was that there were no funds to send those students to that event. Is that what I heard?
That's what you heard.
Okay. Thank you.
It has been wonderful to have all of you here tonight, and, and we did enjoy being at South End on Friday, and the little fellow also asking, because McKinney and I were sisters because we had the same color hair.
And you both wear glasses.
But he was more intrigued, intrigued over our hair.
Our hair.
It's the same color.
They just loved the gray hair, and we loved being at Monroton too. We just, it was great being back in the schools with the children. It was fabulous. And it's been wonderful to help with Reality of Money. I'm looking forward to being at Reedsville High tomorrow morning. It's, it's a phenomenal experience to see those children come in, and they get a folder, and they have a certain amount of money, and they have to go to all the stations, and some of them run out of money before the end of the month, and they have to go to the help station. But it is, it's an eye-opener for children to see what it takes to live these days. So it's, it's a lot of fun. The FFA banquet was phenomenal this year. I just want to say, we're really putting out some great leaders from Rockingham County. It was amazing to be at that the other night and see the leadership that's coming out of that organization. That is fabulous. And something else that happened at the Early College, and I didn't know this until I was at church yesterday, but there was a, a child was sick in one of the classrooms, and they had to call for help, and another child said, "Let's join hands and have prayer." And they did, and it was just a phenomenal experience, they said, for those Early College students that day. So I think that was such an uplifting thing to happen. And thank you all for being here, and let's move on. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Okay. Have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
opposed.
Okay, we'll go through the, Dr. Perkins, the ELA adoption.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board members. Dr. Stover, come to you tonight with your, seeking your approval of the ELA adoption. You approved the actual vendor back in January, and we have been negotiating with the company and working with our instructional coaches and connect team members to select the appropriate materials that we'll be purchasing. There's a tax list, and I guess I should bring it up. The resources will be paid for with SIR III funds, and just as a reminder, SIR III monies require 20% set aside for learning loss, and this will help us meet that objective. The total is $1,265,103.13, and that's really small. Let's try to blow it up a little bit. And I'll be glad to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Anyone have any questions? Do we have a motion to accept this?
I make them. Go ahead, Bob.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Perkins, have furniture?
Yes. It's a hard copy, you made. So, McMichael High School is planning to use Title I funds to purchase some flexible seating. Generally, the first year a school is identified as a Title I, we allow them to purchase furniture and things like that. Typically, though, that is not an allowable expense in subsequent years because the federal fund looks at that as a capital purchase. So, but in a, in a first year, we do allow furniture to be purchased. They're wanting to purchase several pieces of flexible tables, flexible chairs, desks, storage bins, to create flexible maker space activities in several classrooms across the campus. Interim Principal Mr. Elroy provided a statement for us, and he said, "At McMichael High, our investment in furniture is geared towards fostering small group collaboration and hands-on instructional practices." And then he goes on to say, "By expanding opportunities for maker spaces and other practical skill workspaces, we are paving the way for industry partnerships that will mutually benefit the school, families, and local economy." And this, this amount requires board approvals, $127,317.96. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have. There's a, on the attached list of the items and pictures as well.
Any questions?
Madam Chair, make a motion to accept.
Thank you. Second?
I second.
All in favor?
opposed.
Thank you. Dr. Corcoran? Head Start?
So, good evening, Madam Chair, Board members. Dr. Stover, tonight we come before you, Ms. Jumper and I, to discuss an expansion grant. This has been a while in the making. As we have mentioned before, we have had a waiting list. From time to time, there is a waiting list, obviously created at the beginning of the school year and then reexamined or revisited throughout the school year, and as we find, we find that we continue to have more students and more families in need of Head Start services. We also are looking, as you look at this narrative tonight, we're looking for an expansion of over $644,000 worth of positions and individuals. So this is a grant that we can request of Head Start. This is an expansion grant, which means that it's not costing the grant, the original grant anything. It's asking for additional funding to add to the program. And so I'll turn this over to Ms. Jumper because she certainly is the author of so much of this work, and I wanted to let her share a little bit about this expansion grant and what it would mean for Head Start.
Thank you, Dr. Corcoran. Thank you, Madam Chair, Board members, Dr. Stover. Thank you for having given us this space tonight. We are here to get approval for the expansion grant for, as Dr. Corcoran said, we have had, we have 110 children going to kindergarten. We have on our waitlist to add currently, we didn't check it today because we've been in meetings all day, but as of last week, it was 245 applications or 245 students on our waitlist. There is no way that we can serve every one of those children and families. So we are asking to, if we can please, you know, fill out this grant. The grant came available, and we wanted to move on it quickly. This is a very competitive grant, so we're not guaranteed to get it, but we are going to apply for it, you know, just to see if we can expand our program. We are asking for 36 slots. Not only are we asking for the, which is two classrooms, 18 children each classroom, not only do we have 36 slots, but we would, inside of the grant, we're asking for two BK licensed teachers, two teacher assistants, two substitutes and floaters, and we're asking for an EC specialist. So this person, in the grant, it is written that right now, currently, our program has, the Head Start performance standards says that we need to reserve 10% of our total enrollment to children with disabilities. So we have superseded that 10%. We're at 22%. So, and it is growing. We see that that number is growing. So at this point, we're going to need, since all of our teachers are not BK licensed, we're going to need an EC specialist or BK, BK octantment teacher to come around to the classrooms who do not have licensed teachers to service these students. So we did add that into the cost of the proposal of this grant. We also added into their classrooms, we need to set up two classrooms. So we have to order all of the furniture and all of the furnishings, materials, everything in the classroom, computers for teachers, all the technology. We also have to expand the classroom, I'm sorry, expand the playground so that we can, you know, be ready for the children, the new children that are coming. Currently, we are looking at Lawsonville Avenue, and we're looking at Draper. Once Draper gets renovated, we have, we're going to have eight classrooms available there, and even with the playground as it is, we still will need to expand it because, you know, the childcare regulation says that classrooms have to be out an hour a day. And so in order for us to meet that compliance, we're going to have to have more than one classroom on the playground at a time. So we're going to expand that classroom so it will be able to house more children so they can meet that criteria. We also are looking at adding bathrooms to two of the classrooms, one at Lawsonville, one at Draper, so we can have a classroom inside, a bathroom inside the classroom. So that's some construction in there. So those are things that we're asking for in this grant, the startup cost, along with the personnel and fringe and the cost of the staff.
And again, this grant does, has nothing to do with our original grant. It's not going to be anything where we're asking for the county or the school district to pay for any of these costs. This would again be, as she mentioned, a competitive grant in which federal dollars would be allotted to Rockingham County schools. So at this point, if you have any questions for us, we'd be happy to answer them.
Madam Chair. Mrs. Jumper, are you, let me see, I'm confused, and that's nothing unusual. You're asking our permission for you to write a grant?
Yes.
Or you already have the grant?
We have the grant completed. We're asking your permission for us to submit the grant.
To submit the grant? You, you haven't actually received the grant?
No.
Okay. That's all?
And like I said, it's, it's competitive.
Right.
So there's a chance we could not, we could submit the grant and still not receive it, but we want to try.
So if you don't get the grant, all these things that you've just talked to us about would be put on hold, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
The other grant you wrote for renovation of Draper, did we get that?
We did, we did submit that grant. We have not yet heard.
So we still hadn't heard from that grant?
No.
And when is this grant due, and when will you hear?
This one is due tomorrow. So, but, and, and there is no timeline where they say when we'll hear. After consulting and talking to some other directors who have written this before, they say usually around the end of July or August. So if you look at the very last page of the grant, I think it's on the very last page, is our timeline, and we're putting it at August the 1st, just, you know, hypothetically.
And when will you hear about the first grant, the renovations of?
There is no timeline, but one thing about the renovation grant, they know that it's coming. We've been, we've had meetings with the.
Consultation with them.
Right. And they know, and they were really welcoming and helping us with the information, so it's being processed now, so we don't know the timeline.
So if we don't get that grant, we don't need to, will that affect this grant? If we don't get the renovation grant, would it affect?
It wouldn't necessarily affect this grant because there is an opportunity with a classroom such as the one that's being mentioned for Draper. such as the one that's being mentioned for Draper, that a family service worker or teachers can go out to homes and can service students a couple of hours a week. Just as a... Pardon me, I can't remember the exact name of that program.
Homebase.
Homebase. Okay. And so, they can do that for that half a semester, whatever it might take, to get through that year until the renovation at Draper does take place.
And I just want to make a point of clarification to make sure. So, the expansion grant is to add on the additional 36 slots, and then that will be recurring after that, right? So, those funds for staff and all that?
Thank you for that clarification. That's good to also mention. So, we just need, if you would be so gracious, as to approve tonight, the expansion grant and the budget and budget narrative and justification.
And I see on the proposal you have submitted May 13th, 2024. So, you've got this in a computer, and you're ready to punch in, right? I'll make a motion that we go with this.
And I'll second it.
All in favor?
Ah.
Opposed? Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Dr. Casell?
Good evening, Madam Board Chair, Board members, Dr. Stover. I'm here tonight seeking approval to proceed with the purchase of four temperature-controlled food service vehicles. Thank you. Sorry. I have a little presentation. Each of those food service vehicles is approximately $60,000, and that's based off of information that I received from Fran Hughes, the Director of Nutrition and Volunteer Services with... She's with the Council of Aging for Rockingham County. And the trucks have actually entered that into our capital expenditure system and am awaiting approval from Dr. Lynn Harvey, as it may potentially be a sole source purchase. These vehicles are straight from the manufacturer to the company delivery concepts, and they are retrofitted basically to suit whatever needs you have. And they are the same trucks. You've probably seen them with meals on wheels. I saw one Wednesday, and that was... So, we need those for our program. Let's see. Next one. So, we will use these vehicles to transport meals for our students to our 35 non-congregate sites that were approved from BPI for summer feeding. We will begin with the use of buses, but of course, it would be more economically sound if we had vehicles such as these to avoid having to pay for bus and diesel fuel, as well as during the school year, to transport meals to SCORE and early college. These vehicles are outfitted with refrigeration and oven units so we can keep food integrity before we deliver the food. And we can also support our warehouse delivery drivers with any needs in the county during the regular school year, as well as support catering and other special events. So, these are some of the specs that I shared in the document. This is the driver's side with the refrigeration. And they... They're built to suit what our needs are, and because we would be providing, you know, hot meals as well as meals for multiple days, we would have the refrigeration unit as well. And there's a picture of the meals on wheels vehicle, so. Any questions?
Will they just be brand new?
Yes.
And they're $60,000 apiece?
That's... So, the quote that I received that from the purchase for the county, they were actually $57,000. They received a $4,000 discount, and that was back 2021, I believe. So, they're actually in the process of securing quotes for another vehicle, but it was approximately, I think, $54,000. And I don't know that we'll get meals on wheels discount, so.
And these will be paid for through your enterprise?
School nutrition.
Yes. Just want to make that clear to the public.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I make the motion that we buy the four trucks.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Ah.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. John?
Messed it up. I'm sorry. I can't. Can you back here? Yeah.
I thought it was the Lone Ranger coming.
You thought it was the Lone Ranger? I heard that.
The Masked Man.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board members, Dr. Stover. I am here tonight to present Reedsville, the Reedsville Elementary Options, and I am presenting on behalf of our Joint Facilities Committee. And just to give you a little background again about our Joint Facilities Committee, we meet pretty much monthly. It's comprised of two commissioners, two board members, Dr. Stover, myself. We also have our county manager, his accountant, Pat Galloway, and we have a partnership also with economic development. So, Lee Cochran meets with us. And Pat will be retiring soon, so we also have Justin Thacker, who deals with their accounting, meet with us. And so, just to give you a little background, as far as Reedsville is concerned and elementary students there, we have four schools that actually feed into the Reedsville area. We have Mall Street. Mall Street was built in 1963, and it's kind of like me. It has good bones and not quite at Social Security age yet. South End was built in 1935, and we also added some classrooms and cafeteria to that building in 1956. Yes. They are currently at 83% capacity. And Williamsburg Elementary and Monroton are two of the newer schools, and they have a capacity each of 541 students. And Williamsburg is at 87% capacity. Monroton is at 88% capacity. And the unique thing about Monroton is we start to look at our full district and the county lines. Monroton has, in their fifth grade classroom, typically, if they have a class, a fifth grade class of 100 students, about 20 of those students go to Reedsville Middle School, and the remainder of those students go to Rockingham County Middle School. So, you can imagine if you were with someone from kindergarten or even from pre-K, the heartache that that could create for a young child. So, as we start to talk about options for the Reedsville area, option one, and I'm going to try to make that a little bit bigger so you all can see it, and we worked with Mosley Architecture. And Mosley has built a lot of the schools here in Rockingham County. Option one is to construct a new Reedsville Elementary School on a site to be determined. This school will accommodate Mall Street and South End students. The building would be approximately 98,000 square foot. It would be a new site. Some of the pros of this would be it would... It's an energy-efficient building. We could actually not have to relocate our students. During construction, South End and Mall Street would remain open during the construction. And these are just options, not necessarily that they have to be this way. And some of the cons would be if we decided to go with a new site, we would have to purchase land, new land, so we'd incur that cost. And the loss of a smaller elementary school. Not that an elementary school cannot accommodate a larger number, up to 700 or more students. It's just something that traditionally, they try to keep it under that amount. And if you look over on the right-hand side at the very bottom, the total, and these are quarter-three figures right now, so they're subject to go up, $55,591,600 would be the cost of that new school. And now, it's very important for us to recognize that, as a North Carolina school district, we can apply for the North Carolina Public School Capital Fund. So, what that means is for an elementary school at this point in time, it used to be $30 million that we could apply for. Now, we can apply for $40 million, and our district would be responsible for a 5% match. So, if we look at this building, $55 million, it means that we would be $15,591,600 over the $40 million, and we would have to pay an additional $2 million. So, we could get a $55 million building for $17,591,600.
And is that based on this year's? They could change the formula for next school year as well. We don't know what those are yet.
They could change the formula. That is correct. Option two is an option of actually going in and renovating Mall Street and the SCORE Center, Booker T. Washington. And Booker T. Washington was also... It was built in 1922. Of course, we would fully renovate both of those buildings, and it would close South End Elementary School. We would have an overall capacity of 770 students on those two campuses. These two renovations, and I'm going to go ahead and make this larger because I do want you all to be able to see this, to renovate Mall Street, it would be $14,232. To renovate Booker T., it would be $15,564,388. So, what we would be looking at, both of those buildings, would be things like new lighting, HVAC. At SCORE Center, we would have to have a cafeteria. So, those upgrades would be incorporated. We would also be eligible, even though you're talking about two different buildings, we would be eligible to apply, once again, for the Public School Capital Fund of $40,000.
Forty million.
Forty million. Forty thousand won't get you very far. Option three. Our newer schools are built on what we consider to be an X model, and they have hallways that can be extended on, upon. And that option would be to renovate and add on to Mall Street, and in addition, we would add an extension on to Williamsburg Elementary School and Monroton, adding six classrooms to each of those schools. So, for Mall Street's renovation, it would be $18,504,662. To add on the 12 classrooms, it would be $6,825. Also, this would be a total of $25,329,662. Once again, we could apply for the grant, 40 million. Option four would be a total renovation and expansion of the SCORE Center. We would close, potentially close, I want to make sure I say potentially, close South End and Mall Street Elementary Schools. Again, this building does have good bones, and it is on approximately 26 acres of land. One of the pros would be we would not have a need for land, a land purchase, so we would just be renovating district-owned buildings. And of course, we would make that a... An energy-efficient building as well. And in... As we know, Booker T. Washington, we would be preserving history as well. The total cost of that would be $45,409,948. And again, I want to stress that we do have fluctuating costs, so they could come in at a different amount. Again, that 40 million would come into play. We would be $5,409,948 over. We would also have to pay our 5%, so it would cost $7.4 million for the district. And moving forward, the reason we're presenting these options to you is because we know too that the community must be involved. So, I'm requesting approval to hold a series of five community meetings to discuss the Reedsville Elementary Options. And the goals of these... The goal of these meetings would be for us to give the community information, to get feedback from the community, to have an engaging conversation, for us to begin planning, collaborating, and to ultimately come to a rewarding result. Do you have any questions?
I have a comment.
Yes.
I think it's imperative that we provide decent, safe conditions for these children to be taught in, and Reedsville definitely needs it. But we also... This group of board members and commissioners need to make sure that we're looking at all schools. I'm thinking, I represent Stoneville, and I don't want... I don't want anything to be done that takes away from providing decent, safe environment for those children.
And I would like to say, and in this presentation, I have not added that, but you bring up a very good point. The facilities, the Joint Facilities Committee, has also looked at district phases. We know and realize that there are other areas. Phase one, for instance, of our work, has involved new HVAC system, new systems, new roofs. And we know that all of those things are very, very costly. So, with the aid of S.R. funding, we were able to get ahead a little bit of where we would normally be if we were just dependent upon going to the commissioners and using those funds. So, we're really thankful for that. Phase two is the Reedsville Elementary Options. But we also have another phase, which will look at the Western District, which will also look at some of our schools. For instance, those that are overcrowded and at capacity. We do have a school that is at, today I looked, it is at 99% capacity. And we still have siblings who are in kindergarten who want to come in. We have another school that's right at 98% capacity. We have another school that's right at ninety-eight percent capacity. And of course, we have to look at our K-three enrollment to make sure that we can accommodate those students as well. But we do have a comprehensive phasing in plan.
And I do appreciate the work that y'all do. I didn't mean that to be a negative.
No, I didn't take it as a negative. I'm actually glad that you did ask that question.
Mr. Wyatt, just so you'll know, we also have created a document, a one-page that kind of shows these phases and articulates what we're going to do because we got feedback from the Facilities Commission, Committee that we needed to show the whole picture because we're showing parts. So that will accompany that. We just have to put some finishing touches on it, but that will be released. Excellent idea, obviously, and we will actually be delivering that.
So I see some renovations, some additions, are there drawings out that we could see? Because this is the first I've seen, so I really don't have a lot of comments. I want to study it. I like to see the, what we have, what we're looking at doing.
So there are no drawings. What we would have to do is actually pay for the design with an architect. This is just basic and the architect did not charge us anything for this preliminary phase. Hopefully, what we can do is work with our Joint Facilities Committee, work with a third-party vendor. We would like to hold those committee, community meetings with a third-party vendor. And once we come up with a comprehensive plan, then that's when we would move forward with the drawings.
And it looks like all these scenarios, South End is going to be closed.
South End is a building that we have also met with the architect with. And when we talk about a new school for South End, actually, if we were to try to renovate and bring South End up to code, it would cost more than constructing a new facility.
But trying to build another school, another new school on that property, is it out?
No. Building a new school on that property is not out. So in the newest information that we can find is in 2019, what they suggest is ten acres plus one acre for every one hundred students. And that, what that falls under is pretty much rural schools. However, city schools, they suggest that you look at other alternatives and one of those alternatives can be a two-story school.
Yeah. But to be real clear, the options we have before you would close South End at its present site.
It would close South End.
Yeah. And part of our quest is to present these options, which have been vetted by our Facilities Committee, and ask for feedback if there are other options. You know, we did look at combining South End and Mall Street on the current South End site, but when you think about traffic flow, the number of kids and all that, that did not seem very practical or feasible. So these were the best options that the architect recommend that we vetted with the Facilities Committee. So to answer your question directly, yes, we would have to close South End at its current site with these four options.
I appreciate a direct answer.
Yes, sir.
And do we have dates for these five meetings? Dates and locations?
I'm gonna defer to Dr. Stover because we have a third-party vendor who will conduct those and we were basically waiting for our Facilities, Joint Facilities meeting that we just had. And we did want to amend so we can go ahead and get those scheduled.
Dr. Young, I know South End's just eight acres, right?
It is.
Okay, but isn't there a school in Charlotte?
There is.
A two-story structure that houses? I just think Reedsville's gonna be very upset losing the neighborhood school. I really do. And Dr. Stover, I sent you a lot of figures from Ms. Woodard. And did you share those at Facilities so they will know how Reedsville's growing and all the new houses that are going to be built?
We did not share those at the Facility Committee meeting that we had on Friday. We weren't able to get to that.
That needs to be shared with commissioners because that is going to be a very big impact to Reedsville. It's over a thousand houses.
I believe it was twelve-hundred.
Twelve-hundred.
Yes, ma'am.
Homes that are going to be built in the next two years.
And I would, along with what you're saying, I've also attended a meeting and a gentleman who does some of the redistricting and studies housing. It was very interesting to see where apartment buildings in particular are being built. Typically, when someone is stable enough to purchase a home, they've pretty much had their children or they're maybe in the later grades of elementary school or going to middle and high school. And apartment, apartments are typically your younger childbearing couples.
Yeah, and so one of the things that the Facility Committee rightly suggested is to have a third-party who facilitates these meetings, who so they won't be seen as biased either one way or the other. And we have contracted, we have contacted someone at the recommendation of our architect, Ashley Dennis, and he gave us a list of dates and we're just waiting for, A, the Facilities Committee meeting, and then this meeting to get the go-ahead, to go ahead and do those community engagement meetings. We wanted, our goal is to do it before the end of the school year, if we have, if we can. And then what we'll do is we'll take the feedback, we'll go back to the Facilities Committee and we'll, we'll present options, options that we have. It might be the same four options, it might be different options. We're gonna listen to the community and go from there. And then we'll give you our, the Board Decision Point Memo. The hope is that we can have this for you for approval in July, at the July meeting, so that we can get it to the County Commissioners for their August meeting, so that then we can then apply for what we, an anticipated date of September for the Capital Needs Funds. We would have a very attractive, we believe we would have a very attractive application for a number of reasons, combining schools, our destination is a Tier-One county, and lots of other factors. So that is, that's our timeline. We want to work backwards from the, the application which we anticipate being due in September. And, and so that's why we, this was a late addition on to the Board Agenda because we wanted to get this out here so we could get that feedback so you as decision-makers could make an informed decision.
Madam Chair, in response to what Dr. Butler was talking about a few minutes ago, we worked with a lady architect with Mosley. Is she the one we're working with now?
Yes.
Without a drawing, she can tell you. She can paint you a picture and she would, she would be, she would do it as to what the building would be. We've been around to the different schools and, and talked with her and she is very knowledgeable and, and you know, you'd have input, I'm sure.
Ashley Dennis is the architect that we are working with. She is also working with us on the grant that Mrs. Jumper is working on. And you know, anytime she's available, she's been just gracious to us to get on a phone call with us, so at any point if you all would like to do that.
I have another question.
Yes.
None of these presentations have you said what's gonna happen to South End if you leave it? I mean, we don't want an empty building sitting in that neighborhood. I mean, that's, that would just be awful. So what is the projection of what are you gonna do with South End?
We haven't, again, this is all part of the feedback process. We have Ms. Young and I have bandied about some ideas, but nothing that we're ready to present to the Board yet.
Well, I just don't think.
But we're aware of that issue.
And we haven't discussed that in Facilities either. Just so, yeah, I just want to be very clear.
And July's coming quick.
Can I make a comment? But I do think that that's a very important, that's a very important piece of the decision-making process. We can't, we can't wait to let this decision be made without that one.
I mean, that, that decision has to go forward.
Yeah.
I mean, you can't make a decision and leave South End sitting there. It's not gonna work.
So I had a, I think I know the answer to this question, but I just want to clarify. The Board at this time is not being asked to vote on one of the options. We're just being asked whether or not we can facilitate more communication.
Where we can, yes, we would love to go ahead and move forward with the meetings, with the community.
And would you mind quickly, the idea is to present the options, talk about the pros and cons, and then ask folks, what are we missing here? What other options have you thought about in these meetings? And then we'll go from there. We want to give you as the decision-makers, all the information we can.
Just go ahead and have a meeting.
Does anybody have any options you want to add?
Do we have a motion to get the input through the meeting? Do we have a second?
Second. Mr. Husk.
All in favor?
Mr. Husk.
Mr. Husk.
Mr. Husk.
The only thing I hate about it is we've talked about this for years and things come up and we gotta have a decision by July. Something's wrong with this.
Speak to that. Bob, I agree. When I first got on the Board, that was one of the things I started saying was that South End needed to be, you know, needed work because my kids had been through there. And I think when I first got elected, the cost of an elementary school at that time.
Thirty, probably.
I think it was like twenty-eight, about twenty-eight million and now we're sitting at fifty-five.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah.
And we gotta do it by July.
Well, by September.
That's right. That's right.
And of course, it is, the Board can decide anything. The reason why we have this timeline is to take advantage of that, the grant.
We have talked about the grants before. This is not something new. This grant has been there for years and we elected not to do anything. This Board approved unanimously building of Stoneville and.
South End.
South End years ago and it ended, period.
Nothing's gone anywhere. That's right.
And we also need to address Central Elementary because you made, you alluded to the fact it's at ninety-nine percent capacity. It's anywhere from ninety-nine to a hundred-and-three percent.
My heart attack.
Capacity. So here we are, we're in May. Is it gonna be another year at a hundred percent capacity? Because we're, it's too late now to make a change for this, the upcoming school year.
And again, I will defer to Dr. Stover.
Good. I don't blame you.
So we did explore some spot redistricting. We got some feedback from the central staff members and the community, as well as some options in the Western Zone. And both the principals said that they would rather keep the status quo for now and then do a comprehensive redistricting strategy because we've got lots of little needs here and there. So for instance, if we have anticipated growth on the Western part of the county, then most of the, where the housing units are located, it's Bethany, and as you know, we have, you know, septic field issues there. And so it might cause some redistricting. And so we want to do a comprehensive strategy, get it all done at one time. But we did explore some spot redistricting that Ms. Young presented. We presented to the Facilities Committee and then got the feedback.
Because we need, I mean, if we're gonna make a change, we need to start letting parents know now for twenty-five, twenty-six. Diller Academy, what are we gonna do with it? What are we gonna do at Central? What are we gonna do at Hospital Bethany? We, we need to start.
We're waiting too late.
We've said all that.
So we talked about, we talked about this January of twenty-three. We pushed it off because we were dealing with the Mall Street, South End School, what we're gonna do with those schools. So we pushed it down the road. Here we are, a year and four months later, we still have not addressed that, that situation, at least up here, maybe in the Facilities, y'all have. But we need to start letting parents know what's gonna happen, what's gonna happen twenty-five, twenty-six. And we don't need to wait until twenty-five school year to, to let these people know this.
Yeah, I agree. And you know, when we originally considered this, Mr. Butler, we contacted some, some companies who would do the redistricting work for us, along with community meetings. The cost was pretty high at that time. I think a little bit over eighty thousand dollars was one of the, the grants, though it was comprehensive. And we, we decided it was to see what was happening. There's still a few unknowns out there, like the effect of vouchers. We don't know what that's going to be. And so we did present some options to do some redistricting, but I think the committee, the feedback that we got from them that I agree with is we, we just haven't had a great history of doing piecemeal. And this is tricky, complicated work. And so I understand what you're saying and I appreciate the feedback. And we want to get a comprehensive, inclusive process that everybody can support because, again, this is, with this process for school facilities, we have to present you options, this Board has to approve it, the county staff have to look at it, do their due diligence, and then our County Commissioners have to approve it before we ever get, move it to the, the application phase. And so these negotiations, these understandings, the feedback can, can be tricky. I think the positive thing that I would focus on is that we are working really well with our county partners, the County Commissioners and county staff. And we've, we've presented options that they, everyone sees that they feel that they could support. And so we wouldn't have that same situation where we would present to the County Commissioners something that they would reject. We want to make sure that what we present, everyone feels good about and there's a spirit of compromise. And at the very core, what is best for our students? And that's what I'm fighting for, that's what I, we'll always fight for. And I know that each member of the Board also agrees to that. This is a tough, complicated decision that's gonna take, you know, tough, complicated actions.
And we make it more confusing.
And, and I will say, I'm, I'm sorry, you go ahead.
No, no, that's okay.
I will say that Mrs. Rechstraw and I had the opportunity to, to speak with the State Superintendent some time back and just gave some scenarios of what we have and, you know, we could have a, a good shot at receiving the grant.
And I, I do have a comment, Madam Chair, if I could just make it real quick. Because I, I do want to just make sure that everybody, that we are, are all on the same page because remember, we, I just want to bring us through that timeline because we have been talking about this a long time. And what, and we started with having a presentation by Ms. Cochrane from the, from Economic Development, who helped us look at our G, our, and I'm not gonna say it right, but all of our addresses across the county and see where students were, were being, were transferring to other schools. And so, and so from that, we were asked to look at our policy on transferring. Right now, it's set at ninety-five, ninety-five percent. That's right, right? If, if a school is more than ninety, ninety-five percent or more, then they can't, we can't allow transfers in. And so that was what we asked to look at first. That has been looked at. I think that was approved last month or last month and a half, maybe. I can't remember exactly when that policy was brought back to the Board, but it has been recently. And so we've had to take a look at that first, that, because that was one of the things that we had heard pretty loudly that we needed to look at to see if we could maximize other schools that were not being as, where the enrollment was not as high. So, so that's been done. Now, this is the next step to be able to take care of what's happening in Reedsville, right? With South End and the, we saw overcapacity there for such a long time, but now that we're back at, with Mall Street, that has helped. So it has been, it has been feeling like you're driving through mud. And, but, but it's just very important that folks hear us say that we are trying to be very due diligent in this process. And I know Ms. Austin made the comment of looking at building, at what's gonna happen with the South End property. And I think that's a great question and a great thing for, for us to certainly consider as we're, we're figuring out what these, what we're gonna go with. But in the same token, I know that having a school there where South End is located is very important to a lot of people. And the thought of not having a school there to a lot of people is probably gonna be very upsetting. And I, I mean, I can only imagine. But at the same time, with all the growth that is occurring, we have to look at and we have to take into account where those, where that growth is occurring and the, and transporting students into those schools as well. So I hope that makes sense. If it doesn't, give me a call. I'd love to talk to you about it. I'd love to talk to you about it. I think anything that we do is going to be better for our students, and that's what we've got to remember, and that's what we've got to stay focused on.
I do, and I, I, I think about the fact that we, we're concerned on growth, but we have kids that are already on site that are not being taken care of.
Yep. And that's why we got to fix this. That's exactly why we got to fix this.
I will say that I feel like this committee's worked really hard to, you know, communicate with, with the county side.
Right.
You know, they've worked really well with us all, all along in getting our roofs and stuff repaired, but we still have roofs.
Right.
That are, that are leaking, that, that students are going in every day, and, and we've just been playing, I feel like we've been putting a roof on a particular school campus since I've been on the Board. I don't, I don't understand, but I mean, it's just been an ongoing process.
We have, we do have those roofs approved.
We do. All of that stuff's been approved, and all, but I'm just saying that I'm appreciative that we have gone through that process, that they have been so willing to work with us to see our needs. And with all of those needs, they have projected that that loan could not happen until the '26, 2026 school year. That's when our money frees up, right?
You're talking about, yes. So we have, just for the public, we have, it's $14 million worth of projects, and I know that we want to have things happen overnight, and with the school system, unfortunately, it just doesn't happen overnight. And I want, I want to explain that we just can't go out and get quotes. Like for my home, I could go out and get quotes. We're dealing with DPI. We have to go through a process through their planning board. We have to get the project approved. Then we have to have a design team. We have to go out for pre-bid, and, I mean, it's a long, it's a drawn-out process. And when you talk about driving through the mud, I mean, I feel like I've been dragged through the mud.
It's called government's gotten too big for its britches. That's really what it is.
I'm not driving through it, I'm being dragged behind the truck.
Well, we, we talk about timelines. I know I'm not as old, old as Ms. McKinney and Ms. Austin, but I will tell you, I graduated at Stonville School, and nothing has been built since I left.
So, and, and I will say again that we are appreciative of the projects that we have, 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 that have been approved. And we are talking about a total of projects that total almost $48 million, you all. So there has been work that's been done. And communication and collaboration that's been done. We just, we all know that we all have needs, we all have wants, and at the end of the day, that's why we want to have these meetings, so we can come to a respectful, great decision for our students.
Can we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we already.
Yes. Thank you.
We've already voted.
We need to make sure, we need to make sure that the community knows because if they have an interest in South End, we have talked about property, there is property there that you can build on without interfering with the operation of the school. We've been through this for years. These people need to, to be able to voice their opinion.
Okay, can we read the statement to go into closed session? Dr. Stover. Oh, Dr. Stover, that's right. I was just certain that was.
I will take that as foreshadowing or, or, or some, some feedback. And so I will make this quick. We presented to you, I think I said I, we would do this report on our working condition surveys, and I'm pulling them up right now. I've got a few highlights that I want to, to share with you. First of all, the good news is this, the headline is this, is that our working condition survey continues to improve across a broad range of areas when you compare to historical results, and also when you compare how we are doing with the state. As always, there are, there's room for improvement in everything, but I think the long story short is that for most of our schools, our teachers appreciate the support they get, the support they get from the administration, from the Board and the central office staff. And so this is district and school results, and it didn't go exactly to the place that I wanted it to, but I'm going to give you a few highlights. So for instance, overall, my school is a good place to work and learn. That increased. We're almost at 91%. We were just at 90%, so we, we moved up a little bit there. I wouldn't want to work at any other school. It's a new question, and we were at 73.28% with that, but when you compare it to the state, that's 67%. So in general, we were up in a number of different areas, both relative to the state. I went and looked at anything that was low, that was not in green, and the way the report is done is that they kind of have a range of green scores. That means you're on track. Blue means caution, and yellow is you're below. And so we looked at all those, and again, we increased in all areas where we have data comparatively, in most areas, not all, most areas we have data. And then in those areas where I thought we were low, I compared to the state, and we were above the state average in almost all those areas. I will, for the sake of time, put all this in a report to you that I will send, but I want to focus on the good news, which is we continue to have data that shows our school district is progressing, and that is because we have great teachers working with families and our students, led by tremendous administrators. And I feel like it's a privilege to work with the group that we have, and we always appreciate the Board's support. This is always a team effort and a team win, and so we want to celebrate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Did we ever vote on that last one?
Yes.
We did.
And we voted.
I know, Bob. It was so much discussion, we forgot.
Mr. Butler, will you read our statement to the closed session?
Madam Chair, I'll move the Board going to closed session to discuss, to discuss confidential questions.
Information pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A 1 and 6, and to consult with our attorney to protect the attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A 3.
Can you have a motion? We're in closed session.
I'll make a second.
All in favor?
Okay, time I'm off.